Okay, I have six o'clock. Welcome to the December first meeting of the City of Placerville Planning Commission. Would you please join me as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance to the American flag? Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God. Indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Painter, would you give us a roll call, please?
Chair List.
Here.
Vice Chair Lopper. Member Friend.
I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Member Kini.
Am I in as a panelist or a member of the public?
Member Rains.
Here.
Sorry.
Michael, I can hear you, but I can't see you.
All right, my question is, am I in as a member of the public or as a panelist?
Panelist.
Okay, great, I can fix the video then.
Okay. With a voice vote, may we approve tonight's agenda? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. All right. Commissioners, please consider the minutes of the November seventeenth meeting. Are there any corrections that you noticed? Is there anything that needs to be pulled from, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. We need a voice vote on accepting the, approving the minutes. All those in favor of accepting the last, the November seventeenth meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, same sign if you don't. There any items that need to be pulled from the consent calendar? Good evening, Mr. Friend.
Good evening.
Items of interest to the public that are not on the agenda this time. Members of the public may bring before the Planning Commission items that are not on the agenda. We ask that your comments be held to three minutes or less. The commission will listen, but take no action at this time. Is there, do we have anybody in the audience that would like to speak?
I'm seeing a couple raise hands. Kirk Callen Smith, I'm going to allow it to talk. Go ahead, Kirk.
Good evening. I asked to speak because I wanted to respond to comments made at your last meeting by Mr. Corici, Thomas, and List. All three had suggested there were credibility problems for those who had spoken against the parklet a couple years ago. People who had raised the issue of parking. And then that night with reference to the Herick Building said that there was plenty of parking. And saw that as a contradiction. There are only two persons who that could have been directed to, one was Sue Taylor and the other was I. Was certainly a vocal opponent to the parklet. So let me explain why it's not inconsistent. There are substantial differences between the east side and west side of the Plaza of Bell Tower. If you start right there at the newsstand, Placerville News, Pop Art, Old Town Grill are among the many businesses that objected to the parklet. And John Sanders of Old Town Grill has his truck out there for catering that gets stuff loaded on and loaded off after catering. When, I think that Placerville Antiques raises a lot of sales tax revenue for the city. And they have large trucks going in there almost daily. At various times of their day, they park right in front of the bell tower. You had one business owner, the owner of Pop Art come in with a great deal of passion and good common sense, explain why it would be devastating for her business. Pop Art is a framing store. And they have competitors that are big franchises in Folsom where there's plenty of parking. So one of the considerations was to put the park right in front of her business. Then when it comes to parking at the Herick Building, you have three parking lots. Those within about a hundred to a hundred and fifty feet at most of that location. So that's why they're different. You had with the parklet, more than forty business people on Main Street. Who filed objections with a petition, a number of them spoke, a number brought in letters. But you had no opposition when it came to the Herick Building. Because as I understood, Mr. Corici and Thomas, they were saying they were supportive of it, but had these questions about parking and felt you ought to look at it. Well, I would point out that all businesses within three hundred feet of this issue. Received notices from the planning staff.
Mr. Smith, you have thirty seconds.
Take a pardon?
You have thirty seconds.
Well, in conclusion, I'd point out that the three of you had more than three minutes to make criticisms of us. And it seems like it's appropriate to come back and explain to you why they're dramatically dissimilar. Also, if you're going to look at credibility, Mr. Corici said that the cleaners needed to have a space for people to come in and quickly drop off or pick up. If you'll notice, there's a hundred and twenty linear feet of special parking behind for loading as well as for fifty minute zones. And.
Your time is up. The next caller, we have Sue, I'm going to allow to talk. Go ahead, Sue.
Hi, thank you, and I want to thank Kurt for some of that clarification. I didn't know he was going to do that, but I appreciate it. It's hard when people make comments and we're not allowed to respond so many times, and I appreciate that. So aside from that, several times meetings have come up on election nights. And I know that you're going to be preparing to do your calendars soon, and I'm curious if you can kind of focus on that. And when we were, we were asking for it not to be held on election night, where it could have been just moved to the next night. Not have it move out two weeks, but maybe just, you know, the Wednesday after so that. And it's not because you've already voted, it's because so many people participate in the. You know, there's just something about participating in elections even. People collecting and getting together and watching the election results and stuff. So I would just ask if you would kind of think about that because it's, it's come up several times on the planning commission where it's been kind of awkward. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Painter, we.
Yeah, momentarily lost my screen.
We have one, one speaker, Mr. Chairman, number eight, five, seven.
Eight, five, seven, go ahead. You'll have to turn your mute off.
Good evening, Planet Commission.
Go ahead.
Okay, I would have to agree that you make a small change to your bylaws. That you would hold no planning commission meetings during a quote unquote big night. Like elections or state of emergency, you can come up with something. But I've seen a few of your meetings held during an election night, which is, it really shouldn't happen. And then going forward with new developments, please be very, very careful in approving new developments that's going to add even one more car to our clogged roads. Without major mitigation factors to the traffic impact. We are really at risk with the amount of clogged streets we have right now to fire danger and everything else. On the therapy store item, I tried to get in on that last time around. I couldn't get through for some reason, I wasn't called on. I would love to speak to it tonight, I understand you closed public comment. Don't know if you can say, those that didn't comment last time can make a quick comment. But anyway. And then on that same item, therapy stores, it was really, the item got bumped to the very end of the meeting. And then Pierre read word for word his entire staff report, just dragging it out, dragging it out. And I'm sure every one of you had already read it. So just, somebody needs to say, okay, we read this, you don't have to read it again. So just, the meeting almost went to midnight, it was crazy, that's all, thank you.
And we were quite aware of how late it was. Thank you for your call, anyone else?
I'm not seeing any. Chair List.
John, I'd like to make a comment that I saw the last hour, had great empathy for all of you. And then I went back and saw the complete meeting from start to finish so that I didn't lose any context. And I wanted that for the record so that the public's aware that I heard everything and saw everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Communications, Mr. Painter, are there any communications commissioners need to be aware of?
No, there are no new communications to you since the packets have been delivered. Okay. Moving on to the public hearing portion of the meeting. Item number three, one fifty Placerville Drive, Site Plan Review ninety dash eleven dash R two. Mr. Painter, do you have a staff report for us? Yes, I was expecting to do a presentation on our Housing Element questionnaire.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right.
But if, if you would like to do item three, I, I can quickly change directions here and do that. Now, to stay with the agenda, let's, let's do the, the housing questionnaire results. Okay, I'm going to take over the screen here to part of the presentation. Okay, so some of you in the audience can kind of follow along with me. I'm actually going to go on to our, the city's website. Where are the respondents' comments and other responses to the questionnaire are now up on our website? And I can quickly go over where that's located. So if you go to the main city webpage, hover over the word government. And then over development services, then down to the planning division and click it. And under the related pages on the left side of the screen, way down here at the bottom is Housing Element Update. So we've got information on the webpage about this particular process. And under the document section here in the middle of the page here, you can view the results. So if I click it, it will come to the full results of the questionnaire. Staff generated this questionnaire to gauge the community's support of the goals and policies within its housing element. As that's a component of the city's general plan. And this is important for, this questionnaire was important for staff as it prepares the update. And the next update is due next year, it's for eight additional years. And so that update is due to the state in May of two thousand twenty-one. Information about the questionnaire and links to it were mailed as an insert with, within the city's water and sewer bill rollout back in September. Additional flyers, mailers, and email announcements were sent to housing organizations and advocacy groups. Community resource organizations that represent a wide range of special interests, including. Groups representing homeless, the children, the abused, the disabled. Traditional and supportive housing advocates, also veterans. The major political parties that have representation here in the county. Announcements were also sent to churches here in the community. Developers, the school districts, major employers, business associations, fraternal organizations. And a total of eighty-six responses were provided up to yesterday, November thirtieth, two thousand twenty. So again, eighty-six people responded. Scroll down to the screen here, you'll see that majority of which of the respondents live in the city of Placerville. And there is, there was a section where a respondent could provide information as to their organization, maybe they represent. And so those are listed. Getting down to the goals and policies. Goal A, if it helps you, I can enlarge in this for ease of reading. Is that helpful? Anyone?
That works, Andrew.
Okay. Goal A, if you look at the pie chart. Approximately sixty-seven percent of the community responders strongly agree and agree with goal A, which is to designate sufficient land to accommodate the city's share of housing needs. Policy A one of goal A, you agree with the city maintaining an inventory vacant residential sites? And over seventy-five percent of responders strongly agree and agree to that policy. Policy A two. Involves annexation of land. This one, this particular policy strongly agree and agree total forty-four percent. With strongly disagree and disagree total thirty-six percent. A three, policy three. Respondents regarding policy A three, again, this involves infill development, strongly agree and agree was sixty percent. Goal B had nearly seventy percent of the responders were strongly agree or agree with this goal. Policy B one. Which calls for encouraging the use of density bonuses to assist affordable housing development, strongly agree and agree responders total fifty-four percent. B two. Seventy-one percent of the responders strongly agree and agree with this policy. Policy B three addresses facilitating senior housing development, seventy-two percent of the responders strongly agree and agree with this policy. Policy B four. Seventy, this is over, this I think was the highest response, seventy-five percent of responders strongly agree and agree with, with this policy. As far as goal C, sixty-five percent were in the strongly agree and agree with policy, excuse me, goal C. Policy C two, which calls for seeking funding sources to develop affordable housing. This was supported in the strongly agree and agree of just over seventy-five percent. Policy C three, which involves removing constraints and barriers to housing development of, of all income levels. Strongly agree and agree total, well, excuse me, exceed seventy percent. Again, very well supported. This section of the questionnaire allowed the applicants, excuse me, applicant respondents to, to respond to various constraints that we've provided here. It's very difficult, and there's a lot of them here, I won't go through all of them. So this information is available to you if you want to go back to the website to look over. But giving an example of, here's a constraint of perhaps lack of infrastructure, water, sewer, drainage, streets to support development. Yes, constraint fifty-five of the respondents selected yes, with twenty-six maybe a constraint to five, not a constraint. Again, you get the idea, we can go to others as well. And this section also allowed some free form where the respondents could provide information as they wished. I won't necessarily address any of these in particular, but slowly scroll through them and you get the, the tenor and, and, and idea of what, what the respondents were intending to provide staff. And, and you. And this section also provided an opportunity for input as to solutions to housing constraints. And like the charts before, there are several different potential solutions. Promoting mixed use would be one. Some of these are difficult to read because they're so long. Let me go back here. Funding sources to amending the zoning regulations. First time home buyers, et cetera. And once again, we provided a free form area where a respondent could provide more information in detail. They, they wanted us to, to, to get their interest in this particular related issue. As we scroll down to policy C four, which calls out the review and revision if necessary of the city's slope regulations or slope ornaments is what we call it. And policy C four was. In the strongly agree and agree was just over fifty percent, at fifty-two percent strongly agree and agree with this policy. The last one tonight that I'm going to go through is, is goal D. And as you can see, this one was very strongly supported by over, well, just at seventy-two percent. So on behalf of Director Rivas and myself, as well as the department, the city thanks all who participated in this process. There will be additional opportunities for public participation during the Housing Element Update process. Which will involve a minimum of a hearing in front of the Planning Commission as well as city council before it gets adopted. As part of the general plan sometime in the spring. So those opportunities and announcements will be back on the page that we got to, to, to share, share with you the respondents. So again, it's on the city's webpage through the planning division. And then you need to scroll down to the, the cycle six update to the housing element. Where again, more information will be provided as meetings are scheduled and opportunities for public input will then be provided. Chair List, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions from the commissioners? All right. Now we will go to item number three, one fifty Placerville Drive. Site Plan Review S R, SPR ninety dash eleven dash R two. And Mr. Painter, we're back with you. For a staff report.
Yes. Tonight's request was made by Gus Ortega of Sign Development Incorporated on behalf of the property owner, Mr. Singh of Elements Petroleum Incorporated. And they wish to amend the Site Plan Review ninety dash eleven, which dates back to a nineteen ninety-one Planning Commission approval. For what was formerly a Shell Station. Now, the request is to re-image this to a quick serve station. The site includes the pump canopies, as you, as you can see from, am I sharing my screen, I can't, I don't know.
Yes, you're sharing your screen.
Okay. Yeah, so the site includes an existing convenience market. The pump canopy, which you could see here in the photo, as well as pump islands. And the building also includes, if you're not familiar with it, it includes an attached car wash. So the request tonight is to re-image the site to a quick serve station. They, they do propose a color change to the building, the pump canopy, et cetera. They also proposing signage for their, their particular business, and that's before you this evening. And the authority for tonight's request is under the Site Plan Review, Major Changes, which is under City Code ten four nine P as in Paul. As well as the sign regulations, which are part of zoning code ten four dash seventeen H. As the proposed signage would be a change to the master sign plan for the site. The Site Plan Review Regulations under ten four nine include and contain design criteria that are specific to signs. That's under subsection G. Those relevant to night, to tonight's request can be found on pages five, six, and seven of the staff report. The one fifty Placerville Drive location is, is one half acre in size. It's within the Placerville Drive Commercial Corridor. And surrounding the site include general plan and zoning of commercial. Uses surrounding the site include commercial retail, financial services, automobile sales and service. A recently commissioned approves childcare center, eating and drinking establishments, a museum, and the county fairgrounds. Sign elevations, I've got several here which are part of your applicant submittal package. I will kind of scroll through these, the elevations and color schemes that are provided are, again, summarized in staff's report. The, the amount of signage proposed is ninety-four, excuse me, ninety-three square feet. And the signage are to have a blue background with gold lettering of the business name. The exception, the, the sign that, that has white in it would be the price sign, I'm going to scroll back to it. And that's for, to, to provide the, the reader, the visitor, the traveler of Placerville Drive of what the, the grades of gas that are, that are for sale there as well as the price. There are additional signs that the applicant is proposing to change to the site. And the, these include the car wash sign, the enter and exit. As well as the decals and signs that are, that are on pump, on the pump canopy and to me, the pump. The gas pumps themselves. Staff has, has traditionally considered these incidental and accessory. And therefore not have, have not in the past been counted as part of the aggregate sign area. Staff's analy, analysis resulted in a determination that the request qualifies as a class one categorical, categorical exemption. Under sequel guidelines one, five, three, oh, one, in that it involves a existing facility. Involving exterior alterations, but no expansion of an existing commercial use. Staff also found that the requested new and existing signs are within the, the maximum aggregate sign area and the maximum allowable, allowable sign area that the sign regulations would authorize. That the colors, materials, finishes have continuity with the color scheme of the business and are therefore compatible with each other. Signs are also designed at a scale appropriate for their locations on the pump. The pump canopy, excuse me, as well as the convenience store above the entrance. The new internally illuminated signs also meet the sign criteria and regulations of City Code. Staff provided as attachment be the conditions of approval from night, from the nineteen ninety-one Planning Commission approval of SPR ninety dash eleven. As well as the conditions of approval from the major change that was approved back in two thousand four. All these conditions except condition B from nineteen ninety-one have been met. It is the, the existing condition of the landscaping of the site that has not been maintained is approved. Under the landscape plan that the city has on file, which dates back to nineteen ninety-one. There are missing prominent trees and shrubs from that approved landscape plan. Also, recent trimming of existing street trees along the frontages of Placerville Drive and Armory Drive. They basically deform these tree specimens. The staff met with the property owner representative on November twenty-third. Their intent is to plant missing species on the site, missing from the approved landscape plan. And replace the extensively trimmed trees along Placerville Drive and Armory Drive with fifteen gallon tree sizes. And place them where indicated on that approved nineteen ninety-one landscape plan. Staff has conditioned, let me scroll back to. Staff has conditioned, let me scroll back to, and I could show you the, the actual landscape plan from 1991. I have zoomed in components of it, including this is the plant legend. And then various portions of that landscaping plan showing trees and shrubs. These last two images show the, the frontages along Placerville Drive. And this one includes the frontage on Placerville Drive and Armory Drive. To we start going back up Armory Drive towards the, the back end of the property near the car wash exit. That's where that one's located. This is the vegetative strip behind the, well, it's the access aisle going into the car wash area. And more behind the building to the, in this case, it'd be the east, east side of the property.
Can I exit the screen here? Come back to you. If I can.
So staff has conditioned this request accordingly to complete these plantings prior to issuance of a construction permit for the commission's authorized work this evening, should they approve the project. The condition further requires the applicant property owner to replace those areas of the 1991 plan shown as lawn. Now staff and the commissioner are aware that lawns are really kind of taboo and in 2020 parlance in a commercial setting. We certainly want to discourage somebody from planting lawn or replanting lawn in this case. Staff has, has requested or recommended a condition that the areas that were planned for lawn be replanted with low growing shrub species, hopefully drought tolerant. And that the applicant should pick a plant species from the city's plant list, which is appendix A of the development guide. So a condition regarding that is on page 11 of staff's report. And that's condition number seven. In addition to what was provided to you in the, in the packet, staff would like to modify that condition slightly with the addition of requiring the applicant to prepare and to submit a revised landscape plan to include the new species for the lawn area and to memorialize again, the, the replanting of the trees that are, that are missing from the, the site today, but consistent with the past approvals. So the applicant would be required to submit that plan for city review and approval. And then that would become the official landscape plan moving forward in association with an additional condition the city has added, which is condition eight, which will require the applicant to record a, a landscape maintenance agreement. And that would to, that, that purpose is to ensure future maintenance of this landscaping as we go into the future. And again, that's condition eight on page 11. Staff recommends the commission, the commission conditionally approve their request tonight by taking the actions on pages nine and 10 of staff's report. I did see the applicant representative in the audience. Think he's, yes, Mr. Sal Pablo is in the audience this evening and I'm sure he, he may wish to speak in support of, of the request tonight.
Okay. Can we hear from the applicant? Hello.
Questions to staff? Questions to staff?
Go ahead.
Was, was there a, was there a landscape delineation in the packet? Cause I don't see it. And my question specifically is how much lawn space exactly were we talking about?
Yeah, I might be able to go back to sharing the screen to kind of show you where that is. Bear with me.
There wasn't in the packet though, was it?
No.
Okay. Just want to make sure I didn't miss it. But that's fine. Can you tell me approximately how much there is?
Well, I think it's probably best shown here and I can activate the pointer. Am I sharing my screen?
I'm not seeing it yet.
No, we, we didn't see your screen last time.
Well narrated, but no screen.
Okay. So there were, are you seeing it now?
I see a red pointer.
Okay. There was a, a small lawn strip here at the encroachment onto Placerville Drive on both sides. But the main area was, was this area here.
Okay.
Approximately, well, it, the approximate location of the price sign that currently exists.
Yes.
Which is probably out in, in this area.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
And Andrew, you said that their landscape agreement plan would just come directly to the city as in they would not have to re-present to the planning commission on their landscaping decisions?
That is staff's recommendation tonight, but of course the commission has the authority if they would wish to have it brought back before you.
Thank you.
Andrew?
Yes.
Um. I'm, I'm assuming from what I'm looking at that this is the gas station that's directly across from the veterans building and next to the museum.
That's at the bottom. And on the same lot or area as Rayleigh's.
Right by the bottom of Rayleigh's. Okay.
Yeah.
I, I'm on the museum commission and we are always bothered by homeless. And I would hope that the greenage foliage, whatever you put up would not be so denser conducive to having more and more homeless people sleeping there. The plan you just showed was 1994 and this is 2020 and the world has changed. So I'm concerned if the foliage is too thick, we'll have more homeless people sleeping there. And they do present a, a serious problem for the museum and our artifacts. So just, that's all I request is that the foliage be spaced far enough apart that we don't have people sleeping on it.
Mr. Painter, would artificial turf suffice in the place of real grass? I've been to a number of gas stations that are using that now, and it seems to be an effective way to have the greenery we're looking for without the maintenance and the water.
Well, artificial grass is not a material that would be consistent with the development guide. I think it, believe it calls it out as although it certainly could be used and under a site plan review, the commission could certainly approve it. I, I don't think it's a recommended material. It certainly would be low maintenance. There's no doubt about that. It might though lead to the condition that member reins is discussing or, or concerned about that it would provide an area for someone who might want to lounge on it. As opposed to shrubs that, and I'm not talking about a hedge row, I'm talking about something low growing. Cause concerning it's the, the location of the lawn area was intended for low growing plant life. And the reason for that is for site distance at that intersection. We don't want landscaping to be so tall that somebody in a sedan can't see oncoming traffic when they're making a turn movement. But to answer your question, yes, I guess that would be an option for the commission to consider a artificial grass.
Okay. Any other questions of staff?
In that, I guess along that same line, just looking at the picture in the, the layout, there appears to be like rocks with maybe some gravel around it. I don't remember exactly when I went and looked, but is, I'm not sure what the material is there, but that's not sufficient. Does it have to be a plant? I guess I'm asking, or could it be gravel? Could it be wood chips, whatever? Things are effective and sufficient for there, or are we looking for more of a lawn look? I guess is my question.
Well, the site plan review regulations do call for a certain percentage of the property of a commercial lot around the parking area and the, in this case, the, the transition from the city streets into the site, they need to be beautified in some way and landscaping typically is what's done. It provides that, that attractive transition between that hardscape, which is the streets or the sidewalk into the property before you get to the business of the use on the site. In this case, it is a, a rather, there's a lot of hard, hard space on this property due to its asphalt as well as the, the canopy and the, and the structure itself, the C store. Yeah. But to answer your question, landscaping is really a component of the site plan review process. And I, I think the, the commission back in 1990, although I, again, you don't have the benefit of looking at in detail the landscape plan. I apologize for that. But it, it appears to be comprehensive. They, they got down to the minutia of like you guys normally do, the number of shrubs and, and ground covers as well as more prominent vegetation such as trees. Now there are some street trees on both, on both street frontages as well as trees along the, the access into the car wash. And those are the areas in which staff has seen some missing, missing plants and trees. So that, that's why staff brought this forward. And I'll, and I'll, I'll bring it back to you. Mr. Friend, you had a comment?
Well, and, and maybe this belongs in the deliberation. I'm, I'm not entirely sure, but Andrew just makes a really good point that we haven't had an opportunity to see the detailed landscape plan. And given that this is a service station and trying to, you know, meet the requirements of, of aesthetic and pleasing and all that. There's only so much you can do with, with a service station frankly. And, and so our opportunity then kind of lies with the landscape plan. And so I, I guess I'll ask my question to staff and maybe it can be deferred until we get to deliberation. But we, we could have, we could condition conditionally approve this and require the landscaping plan come back to us. Could we not?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And, and so just for anyone's benefit, that's probably where, where I would be at, at the moment, just for sake of discussion. Thank you.
Okay. Maybe we hear from the applicant, Mr. Pablo. I see his name, but I don't see a mute and we're not hearing him.
Oh, he's raising his hand. Mr. Pablo, go ahead.
Did we lose him?
Seems like that.
In the meantime, Mr. Chairman, is there anyone else in the audience that wants to speak on this? We could maybe take them and then get back to the applicant if we can figure it out.
That would involve opening the public hearing.
Isn't public hearing already open to hear from the applicant?
Technically, yes.
He seems to have his hand raised. Do you have to activate? Of him? I see him as an attendee.
I, I don't see his hand raised. All I see is his, is his name.
He is in the attendees column. So, and he's right at the top.
He just took his hand down and raised it again. So maybe try to unmute him one more time. Or?
You mean turn it off and turn it back on again?
Mute is on. Mr. Pablo, turn your mute off and you're ready to go.
We will look back on these days with fondness, I'm sure.
Can't wait for that time to look back on these days.
You and me both. Mr. Chairman, I've made numerous attempts asking Mr. Pablo to unmute and no response. He is now muted himself.
Yeah. Okay. I think we, for the sake of time, let's go ahead with, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this?
We have, we have a speaker 857.
857, turn your mute off and you're ready to go. 857, are you there?
Yes. Good evening, commission. So I would, on the condition number 12, the construction hours, I'd like you to reconsider. It looks like you're strict limiting it to daylight. A lot of businesses like this, including fast food and stuff, like to do the work at the night hours to not impact business income hours. You could limit it by decibel, like saying no jackhammering in the middle of the night. This building is pretty far from the nearest residence. So that's something on business, uh, construction hours. During, I think you really should bring back the landscape plan to the planning commission for approval. One, because you have some new members and they really should go through that process of species and learning city ordinances like the 50% parking lot shading at middle of summer kind of thing that artificial turf is banned in commercial zones. And I really think you should, the commission should reconsider allowing artificial turf generically in commercial zones or anywhere, because there is some amazing products out there that look so real. You can't tell from 10 feet away. They are expensive, but when you add up all the years of water and maintenance, uh, they might end up being cheaper. As for the homeless laying on them, nah, I agree, but I think you should bring back the landscape agreement and have that discussion of all the problems and pitfalls. I would like to see if you're going to have them remove those trees that have been butchered. They would plant the new 15 gallon trees that are stick trees. Get them established for a few years, X number of years, and then remove the butchered existing trees. Because if you wipe them all out and put little sticks in the ground, it's going to look like it's just been weed whacked to the ground for five, 10 years. It's going to look terrible. And I agree to, you guys should always consider less foliage, thick foliage for people to hide in. Remember not to block the line of sight from landscape planting from its youth to its maturity. You have a lot of vehicle turn movements in that area. And so those are just some thoughts. Please reconsider allowing artificial turf if it is a high quality turf. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Let's try Mr. Pablo one more time. Mr. Pablo, are you there?
Mr. Pablo is not there, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
So our next speaker would be Ruth Michelson.
Ruth, are you there?
Okay. It took a while for the unmute button to come up. So little technical problem. I just had a question about landscaping, nothing so specific as what the others have said, but when you guys specify a landscaping plan, what's the enforcement of that landscaping actually occurring? Cause I'm thinking back to mosquito outfitters where there was some specific frontage trees and bushes, et cetera. That was to be put there and you know, subsequently, and I don't remember the detail, the fine detail of the whole thing. But you know, they just said, well, we didn't feel like doing that. And I think the In-N-Out Burger. And I think the In-N-Out Burger might have had a similar situation where something was specified and they didn't feel like doing it. And so I was just curious, what's the follow through? And obviously, a plan that was in nineteen ninety-one, I think you said, and now it's no- nothing like that. Well, I wouldn't expect any annual review of landscaping, but. You know, is there some shorter term review to make sure that the applicant actually follows through? And if they don't follow through, what's the repercussion? The other really short comment I wanted to make about turf uh that Mr. Dobridge brought up. You know, a lot of times at gas stations, people bring their animals out. To use the grass. Because they're traveling and they want their animals to be able to relieve themselves. And I just wondered how does artificial turf work in that situation? I don't think it'd be so great. Just something to think about. Anyway, if someone could answer me. What the follow through is on landscaping plans, I'd I'd just like to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Uh next caller would be Bobby.
Bobby, unmute and go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Bobby O'Hara with Sign Development. I'm uh Sal Pablo's associate. Uh he's clearly having some audio issues, so I just wanted to jump on real quick and thank you all for your time. And uh thank Andrew for his great job in in delivering the presentation. Um I would like to uh. Wish upon you all that that we could get an uh conditional approval this evening for the signage portion of it uh a- and allow. The owner to work with you on the landscaping portion. Uh it it doing doing that would enable us as the sign company to get the ball rolling for him, to get the signs. Into production and not delay further uh the the timing for him to get his his site up and and. Beyond the temporary ID'd uh phase, so uh that's just my thoughts on that and I hope you'll you'll take that into consideration. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I believe that's all we have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Then what I'm going to do is go ahead and close the. The public hearing portion of this item and bring it back to commissioners. Are there any questions from commissioners to staff? Guys are awful quiet tonight.
I don't think so. I mean, I can just, are we just gonna start our deliberations or are we still on on?
Yes.
Okay, so yeah, I mean, I think I'm going with. What everyone said, it's clear that we need a little bit more clarity on the landscaping portion. Um I do, I my. I agree with Michael that it would be probably great to have that come back. Um as the caller said, go through it, make sure that it's good. It is a significant corner. Um but I would also like to propose that we discuss moving forward, um as Bobby said. With allowing them to at least start with the signage if we don't have a problem with that and not necessarily hold that up with the landscaping. Maybe do a different kind of timeline expectation for the two or something. I'm not exactly sure how best to do, but. And the other question I do have would be around um the 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 construction hours that were mentioned by the the caller. Do we know if that is something that would come into play? I'm not sure if Bobby could answer that. They normally do their work at night or. If we would be, I guess, severely impacting their normal practice by having these construction hours.
Okay, any? Anybody else?
Couple of things, Mr. Chairman. So I I'm in pretty much the same uh mindset as Commissioner Lepore. The uh and I won't comment on on landscaping at this point, because I hope it's gonna come back to us. If we get into a motion that doesn't require that, then I'll pipe up again. Uh first, a comment on the uh. The signage as presented, I mean, it's very, very clean. Uh it's not gaudy. Um you know, what what are you gonna say? It's it's a service station, so it's, you know, like whatever, but. Um if nothing else, I do kind of like the uh race flag. Uh in the logo, it kind of ties in with the Speedway at the uh at the fairgrounds and whether or not that was intentional or not. Um I think it it's good, so. Um aside from bringing the landscaping plan back, I would be inclined to to support it. My concern with the construction hours is that the language in item twelve. Is consistent standard language we use for every single project. And so if now we start to change it. Then it becomes a problem moving forward for other projects. This project, I doubt that the construction would cause any inconvenience. On Placerville Drive or Fairgrounds or or any of that business. But, you know, for consistencies sake. And it's wa- it's, you know, it's it's winter time now is where we're at. I'm not sure there's much additional benefit. In the summer, clearly, one could argue that gee, you could you could actually start at five comfortably and end almost at nine P M, but. I don't see that as the reason now, so. For that reason, I would probably be disinclined to change the construction hours, that this is our standard language. And tho- those are my comments, and then I do hope that staff will, after we vote, will just. Speak to the question of enforcement, because that that does come up from time to time. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I have a comment, Commissioner or Chairman List. Um regarding the the specific planting plan. Um I'm not that concerned about it. I think that um.
Can you get closer to your microphone or speak up? We're having a hard time hearing you.
Okay, I'll move this closer. Um, does that help any?
That's better. No?
Yeah, um. I think uh staff can thoroughly review and the. New planting plan and address the concerns that uh have been brought up tonight as far as visibility at the intersection. And uh choosing uh the appropriate plants from our um appendix A, the plant list. I am concerned about this uh delaying the uh construction permit. I want to be sympathetic to the project, the applicant. Uh that they want to get going with the uh. The subject of this application, which is to re-sign uh. Give new signage to their business. Also, we're moving into winter now. It's not exactly. Uh the best time, it's a little bit late in the fall to be planting uh for successful. Uh transplanting of of trees and uh ground covers, so I'd like to. You know, and once I I I agree that the landscape has been uh abused and needs to be redone, but. I'm trying to think of a an appropriate timeline wherein the city. Is able to enforce getting this planting plan, you know, signed and then move on with eight. The landscape maintenance agreement so that we can be assured that come, you know. Spring of the plants go in and are successfully transplanted and. We start to kind of soften the look of this hardscape. So that's uh, those are my thoughts on um see, conditions seven and eight. And I agree with you, uh Mr. Friend, uh the construction hours, I think um. I I have no problem keeping condition twelve, the way it's written. Uh should be sufficient for what they are proposing to do as far as installing their signage. They shouldn't have to work into extended hours for this project. I I don't anticipate that. So it uh would like to work with the rest of you commissioners to maybe hammer out something uh a little different for number seven. So that the, like I said, the city is assured that we get a adequate, a suitable planting plan. Uh but that it's installed, uh we give the applicant a little bit more leeway to put that in, say. February, March, maybe might be a better uh time as opposed to requiring it now in uh. The first part of December, although I say that and it's going to be sunny and sixty for the next few days, so you know. That's uh, they they do have some time right now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Yeah, it would seem to me that um uh this is actually the absolute best time to have to develop the planting guide. And bring it back to commission while and uh planting conditions are uh unfavorable generally. Um trees, you can begin to plant trees, bare root trees anyway, if nothing else, in in as early as February, depending upon conditions. I think the timing will actually work out by the time the applicant puts together the planting plan, brings it back uh for us. I I think the commission should review it not only for, because I personally would like to see it, number one. Number two, I I think uh again, new commissioners, as was pointed out, uh would be not a bad idea to go through that process. Look at the recommended planting uh palette, et cetera, and so I I I think it'd be appropriate to uh to strike. Uh seven or reword it so that uh the uh landscape plan will come back to commission. Uh for review and and that doesn't have to be delayed um uh by any stretch. As soon as they could kind of put it together, then. And the commission can comment on it, and then probably it'll be in ministerial for staff after that point.
Right.
Mr. Friend, how do you think that could dovetail with the uh starting the installation, the actual construction and putting in the new signage?
Oh, no, no delay whatsoever. We we would approve the uh, assuming it was gonna get approved with with no other conditions. I have. Haven't heard of any other requirements. We could go ahead and and approve. They could start right away. The only thing they would have to do in the meantime. Before they could get final uh is for the landscape plan to come back. So they'd be able to start straight away.
I think that's a a reasonable um approach to this condition.
Someone would like to make a motion to that effect.
I'm happy to move the item, Mr. Chairman. Let me just get to my page, so uh. I move that uh we approve the site plan review SPR ninety dash eleven dash R two. And a minute to uh for the address at one fifty Placerville Drive, adopting the staff report as part of the public record. Accepting all of the conditions as specified therein, with the exception on a Roman numeral three of condition seven. Uh which would require instead a landscape plan uh to be brought back to the commission for uh review and approval.
Second that motion, is there? Comments?
I just have a friendly question. Is there a timeline on the return for the landscape? Cause that with that, it would be open ended, right, when they return?
Well, uh I assume we have a second, so we have discussion, is that correct?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, so I I mean, to the extent that they can't, they can't get uh their project signed off until such time as they get that going, I would presume. It would be uh in in their desire, but I would say uh no later than forty-five days if if we need to put a timeframe on. I could amend the motion within forty-five days. No later than.
Days from of today?
Today, yes.
For a plan.
For the for the landscape plan.
And then what about the installation of part of uh number seven is um. Let's see, was to have it, uh have the trees planted, let's see, prior to the issuance of. Construction permit.
Yeah, and 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 depending upon the plants that are in the. I'm sorry. Depending upon the plants that are in the palette. We could specify, when it comes back to us, we could specify as a condition uh that they uh the the plants have to be in. Uh in place by uh certain date or or weather favorable weather conditions or something along those lines. That's gonna come back.
Have you had a comment?
Yeah, for the record, who seconded the motion?
I did.
Yeah, I don't have any strong feeling about when it is. I just was curious if we want a timeline incorporated into the motion with regards to the landscape plan or not.
I I'd be happy with, I'd be happy to have a forty-five day. I'd I'd like to see the plan within forty-five days, if the second of the motion will accept that as a friendly amendment.
I will go along with you, go to sixty.
All right, I'll give you sixty.
I like sixty-two, John. I think that's a nice number, gives them a little more time.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and to clarify, there is no stipulation that this is to occur before. Issuance of a construction permit for the signage, lighting, et cetera.
Correct, to my, the intent of my motion is they get to move forward with their project, and within sixty days, they will uh submit a landscaping plan to us.
For your review and approval.
Yes.
Okay, any other comments or questions? All right.
The only uh other question I have is then regarding number eight, which also says. Landscape maintenance agreement uh would be prepared and uh on file prior to the issuance. Of the construction permit for the activities of changing the signs. How does our change to number seven um? A- affect number eight? Do we need to reword that also?
Thank you, good catch.
An agree- maintenance agreement can't be filed before we have a landscaping plan, right?
The landscaping agreement, if I could interject. Reflects and refers to the in-approved landscape plan, so yes, it's it's important to have the plan approved before we record it. A mechanism to have it maintained.
Well, Mr. Painter, are we correct uh that there will be a a final? Uh we talk about uh. Issuing the construction permits, but they, the applicant will have to get a a a finalization. For the permit so that we can enforce the landscape of the plan and the maintenance.
Well, if you are allowing, if you vote to allow them to proceed with construction permit. And that improvement plan does not include landscaping, because the landscaping plan has not been prepared. For your review and approval. Then then those actions and that that entitlement or that request for a building permit would be separate from the landscape improvement plan. So that can be done. It would just be a separate permit for the landscaping portion of the site.
We can bifurcate that. We can bifurcate it.
Could. You could, and then the developer, the applicant would have an opportunity. Uh I believe it's a six-month window before they must get and must uh request an inspection for work performed. Now, it's likely, in my time here, it's likely that most sign request permits, they're installed on one day. Sometimes they're installed in the morning of their their expected inspection scheduled day. To anticipate the inspector going out to inspect the work. So the turnover and the turnaround is really quick. Uh there won't be much lag time between its actual installation, the signs and the lighting from. Perhaps the landscape plan, so yes, you could bifurcate it. It might be cleaner that way. And um. But to answer your question, Member Keeney, the or or. Yeah, comment to to us is that, yes, that permit could be held open until such time as the landscaping plan is approved by you. And installed and inspected by staff. You could, you could phrase it that that way as well.
Yeah, so that that would be my intention, Andrew, and I don't, I I'm I'm having difficulty. Formulating verbiage uh to amend the Second Amendment on the motion. I don't know if you can help me with that.
Well, it it appears, as Member Keeney mentioned, can can condition requested or recommended condition number eight does have a modifier in there. Or requirement that it's contingent upon. Uh the issuance of a construction permit. So that language, as Member Keeney rightly brings up, that would need to be modified to some future time or eliminated. Pending the approval of the planning commission's approval of the landscaping plan. Maybe that's the language you want to put in there.
Yeah, there you go.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, but, okay, so the time, the timeframe is when they have to record it, see that. The issue, the impetus to record the the maintenance agreement was getting a construction permit. So.
Yes.
The so we so we could condition this, that they they must record the landscape maintenance agreement within. Uh ten days of the landscape plan being approved, something like that.
Yes.
All right, so. So if if that's the case, then then I would amend my motion such that condition eight would uh. Be rewritten. To read. The property owner shall record a landscaping maintenance agreement on a form prepared by development services staff. No later than ten days following approval. no later than ten days following approval of the landscape plan by commission or administratively by staff if the commission so directs that action. And the reason I add that is because we may look at the landscape plan. There may be a few details that we want them to work out with you, Andrew. So staff may still have the final administrative aspect of that. So that would be my amendment and chair list, if you would find that to be suitable.
I, I approve that.
Good catch, Commissioner Keeney.
Anything else?
I just want to, uh, ask, uh, or get some sort of assurance from staff that, uh, by, uh, I think, um, Mr. Friend hit the nail on the head, uh, you know, we, they're going to move forward with, uh, we're allowing them to move forward with their construction, but, uh, do we still have the same, um, impetus for them to follow through on the landscaping? So we, so we still have the enforcement mechanism.
Go ahead, Mr. Painter.
Well, staff will, will, uh, admit that that is the way, that's why it's phrased the way it's phrased. The city wants a hammer on an applicant to perform a duty and a responsibility to maintain the landscaping. So yes, you are all correct that that's the way it's phrased. So the kicker, the mechanism was the obtaining of, you know, in a, 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 a construction permit for the other work on the site. That's, that's not to say it gets to the point raised by a member of the public that what is the, the mechanism for, for reviewing these things? Uh, this is still, these are conditions of approval on an entitlement. In this case, it's a site plan review. And it, in a failure to, to comply and, and meet the conditions of approval, could land the property owner into a situation where they would have to, uh, address those issues with you under a public hearing, where the outcome could be a variety of things, including revocation of site plan review. Uh, so the city does still have a hammer. Pardon, pardon the expression.
Mr. Chairman, if I could speak to the enforcement a little bit here, um, just a little background. Uh, when the current owner, um, chopped down those trees and basically it was because of, at least my understanding from talking with our code enforcement, um, officer that, uh, they had cut the trees down because they provided shaded for, for, uh, transients. And they, they thought that was a deterrent, but that was part of their approved landscaping plan. And so, um, we do have an open code enforcement case against the property owner and, and I don't, I can't give you a precise status report on where that enforcement is, but I believe we have levied fines. Because the unfortunate thing, there's a difference between a site plan review approval and say a conditional use permit. Where a conditional use permit, we can bring that back to you for non-compliance with conditions and revoke the CUP. With respect to a site plan review, there's really nothing to revoke. And so typically we wouldn't bring that back to you. What we do is we would then initiate, it's a zoning code violation, if you will. Um, if they're in violation of their site plan review, it's sort of a precise, yes, Mr. Painter?
Yes. Uh, Director Rebus, there is a CUP for this, uh, C store and gas station. So we do have a mechanism. The CUP was issued at the same year, nineteen ninety.
Okay. So.
If you were aware of that. So there, there is, there is that use that we could hammer.
So hopefully then there's a tie-in between the CUP and the site plan review such that the CUP requires, um, satisfaction of the, the, any conditions or requirements of the site plan review. And then, uh, Mr. Painter would be correct. We could revoke the permit. With respect to an applicant that's under a landscaping maintenance agreement, well, then they agree to maintain the landscaping in accordance with, with the standards. Um, and in accordance with the adopted landscaping plan. If they don't, then the city does have an option, uh, to hire a contractor and bring the landscaping back to the condition per the approved site plan review, per the landscaping plan. But that's very, very time consuming and very costly for the city to go that route. So typically we go through a code enforcement route where we then will find the applicant for non-compliance as a zoning code violation.
Okay. Anything else before we vote? Hearing then, Mr. Painter, would you do a oral vote for us?
Chair List?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lepper?
Aye.
Member Friend?
Aye.
Member Keeney?
Aye.
Member Rains?
Aye.
All right. This and all decisions why the planning commission may be appealed to the city council within ten calendar days. Thank you very much. Item number four, condition, uh, continuation of, um, November seventeenth, three thirty nine Main Street Therapy Store, CUP twenty dash oh four and SPR twenty dash oh four. And my understanding is that, uh, Commissioner Keen has excused herself. We're glad to have, uh, Commissioner Rains back with us and up to date. And, um, as I understand, we have closed the, the public hearing portion. We've brought it back to commissioners for discussion and, uh, a vote. Um, anyone like to start with the? Any of the commissioners like to speak on this topic?
All right.
Well. Go ahead, Michael. What do you have?
No, no, no. I'll defer.
Um, well, I mean, there's, there's a lot obviously that went into the last meeting. We heard from a lot of people. Um, one of the things that I did when I reflected on this after the last meeting was go through, um, a lot of the comments and also think back of the prior experience we had going through the formula business evaluation with, um, Sour Dough and Co. And, um, I went back through and looked through my notes from the, the workshop that we had with Mr. Driscoll and staff, uh, regarding formula businesses and what that means if we were to change the current regulations. Um, I was pretty happy with that and thought that it was still relevant, relevant to this situation. Um, I think that the signage, I think, is pretty nice. It's not changing the outside of the store. Um, there is no elimination that we were talking about before. And, um, I don't, I mean, overall, I'm impressed by the, the story of the store and the fact that they are picking historical downtowns. I think is a good, um, relevant thing to our downtown for a business that is considered a formula business. Um, I'm not sure. I feel a little lost in my thoughts just because there was a lot that went into this discussion. So maybe you guys can help me to steer them towards a certain direction of discussion.
I'm happy to stir things up a bit.
Sure.
So, uh, and you're absolutely right, uh, Commissioner Leopard, there, there is a lot to consider in, in this application, both the specific responses and input we've received as well as the, the, the broader considerations. And I think I'm, I'm going to start with, as I did with sourdough. I think our actions should be, uh, conducted, uh, with the, the knowledge that this is going to be appealed. Regardless of what we do, there will be an appeal. And so our reasoning, our positions, I think, need to be articulated such that they're consistent with policy, that, that they reflect consideration for, for the downtown, reflect consideration for the applicant and, and are justifiable, regardless of how you plan to devote on this. I went back to, um, a document that somehow I, I think I missed. There was just so much in the last uh, packet, but this is a discussion of the emergency or ordinance to, uh, for the moratorium. And I don't know how many of you actually went through this. And I, I, there's a few places that I've highlighted that I just want to bring forward because I think, I think they're relevant i- in terms of the, the broader argument and also the, the comments that we received. Um, and the first thing I, I want to say is we were admonished early on. Uh, it says to alert the planning commission individually of their liability to not abuse their discretion over their police power by ignoring local government's power to regulate citizens' use of their property through zoning, et cetera. Okay. And I thought, well, that's fairly strong language directed at us, frankly. And then it goes on in several places, trying to make the argument of a threat to the public health, safety and welfare. And, and, and I, I'll be honest with you. I, I'm really challenged by that. Then it says, it, it speaks specifically that the purpose of the CBD, while not clearly defined, is generally established to provide for pedestrian oriented, commercial institutional public use and to prevent encroachment by unrelated incompatible uses. So you have to ask yourself, okay, well, does this, does this business lend itself to pedestrian orientation? And can an argument be made that it's unrelated or incompatible use? Okay. But that's a question we have to ask. And then it goes on to say there should be no negative impacts on the public health, safety and welfare again. And formula stores with no interest in the local economy or community. I'm going to stop right there because in general, I absolutely agree that we don't want formula businesses that are represented by individuals that we'll never see. We're never going to see Mr. Toyota. We're never going to see Mr. Chevron. We're never going to see Mr. Best Buy. But certainly in both cases, the sourdough company as well as therapy stores, the owners themselves came to us and presented to us. Okay? So I, I, I think that, I think that the issue of, of no interest in local economy is, I'm not sure that's made. And it goes on to say that existing mom and pops put their heart, soul, investment in their businesses. Well, again, going back to sourdough and to this, these are mom and pop businesses. The only issue is that these mom and pop businesses became successful and wound up with, with more than one store or more than five. And so it, it presents, presents the question of, okay, well, what formula business at this level versus formula business at the Taco Bell level? You know, those seem to be two very different things. This, the argument for this ordinance goes on that the city should, should focus on attracting and helping locally owned businesses. Yet when I don't, I can't recall the name of the business that was in where the enchanted uh, forest is right now, but it was, it was a bar tap room, uh, in there. It used to be the old, old round tent years ago. That was, that was an out of city owner that he was from San Francisco or someplace. But I don't recall any, any outrage or concern that, that that person had opened up that business. Okay. And, and was operating it, right? So, uh, again, I'm, I'm challenging some of the, the arguments that are being used for the basis of the, the moratorium. And then I'll go on to the concept of competition. Okay? And, and, cause there's a lot of concern that this business is going to be offering the same thing that other, other stores or shops have. And I got to thinking, okay, well, what, let's say I opened a, a tap room and I served Coors Budweiser in Sierra Nevada and everything was great. And then a month later, somebody else opened up a tap room and they're serving Coors Budweiser in Sierra Nevada. Well, good grief, Mabel, what am I going to do? Well, I'm going to add Guinness or I'm going to add something else that brings people into my town or into my shop, excuse me. And that argument can also be made about why people come to Placerville. It isn't just for the shops. Certainly that's a part of it. Placerville Hardware is a historic draw for, for example. But the stagecoach and the Christmas trees are the other things that we do are also draws. It's not limited strictly to the businesses. Um, formula businesses are not prohibited. I, I'm really concerned by the, the number of people that the signed petitions, I mean, that weighs heavy. And in, in my thinking on this, so many businesses sign petitions. And a lot of people just think that, you know, we prohibit chain stores. We don't. The ordinance does not. It says they must be reviewed for their compatibility. If therapy store was a building, a, a clothing outfit like Combelix was, but they had seven or eight or 10 stores that were started by mom and pop and still run by mom and pop. Well, well then what, what's the deal? So I'm, I'm really, it's really difficult to deny in this case to say, no, you, you may not, because what is the basis? It seems that a lot of the arguments for why this store doesn't fit, I think the story absolutely fits. I think her story is an entrepreneur. I think the story about her grandfather coming in the gold rush, those things all fit to me. They meet the, they meet the requirements. That's you. That is unique. That is a story that could be displayed in the store, uh, something that is, is just different that, that a lot of folks have, I think. Um, but formula businesses are not prohibited. And I don't think people, I don't think people understand that. And, and you know, it, if, if an ordinance were to be written based upon a lot of the sentiment, I think I heard the last time and, and read, it would be, it could only be a single store shop owned by a mom and pop who lived here. Okay. That, that's what the requirement would be. Well, I'll tell you what, we'd have a lot of vacancies. And in these challenging times, we'd have vacancies. One of the things that bothered me on the petitions, by the way, the language there suggested that the plant, here it is right here. The language suggested that the Placerville City Council Planning Commission and Economic Development Committee's agenda is to bring in more chain stores. I don't know where that comes from. Um, I'm going to ask the, the, the staff straight up, yeah, to answer honestly. Uh, if, uh, you recruited this business, if you're recruiting other chain stores, I know this commissioner didn't. I'm, I'm not aware of any efforts uh, on our part to speaking from the city to do that. And so I, I am inclined to support this project. I'm not excited about the outside sign, but rereading staff's report. It's almost identical to the Combelix sign. Okay. Pretty plain, pretty there. You know, I, I would like to have seen a nice mural depicting your story or whatever, but that, that, okay, that's stupid for me. Um, so I, I am really, aside from the fact people don't like this, some people do not like it. I don't think the case is made that it's going to drive anybody out of business. I still go to Placerville Hardware despite Home Depot and Diamond. The only thing I don't go to Placerville Hardware for frankly is lumber. Why do I go? Because they know me. They, they try and go in there and talk to people. They add value to my visit. And that's what local merchants should do. That's what anybody should do in, in addition to Guinness. So my inclination is going to be to support the project and I hope that helps you, uh, get some of your thoughts together.
Uh, it really did actually, because you reiterated a lot of what I was thinking. And, um, I really want to underline the point that you made that sourdough did not set a precedent or make a change to something that was not already on the books since two thousand and four, I believe was this one. And, or I think it was oh four, that this regulation around formula businesses came in. Um, and I've heard in casual conversations, not, you know, planning commission conversations, just with friends and people in the community that since we approved sourdough, we've set a precedent. And I really think it's important how you explained it, Michael, that we do, we have never disallowed them. Um, when, when I did go to the planning, the Placerville Economic Advisory Committee, um, it was myself, Sue Taylor and the Mountain Democrat there, listening to them discuss the formula businesses. And then, you know, at our meeting Kirk Smith was there, but it was kind of all on us doing it in person and, um, and we went through and we were really concerned and we were really thoughtful on what the, the outcomes would be if we were to make a moratorium or make a change. And we all came to the agreement that this is, as you said, a really good mechanism to allow people to come in that are, you know, have been successful, but that aren't necessarily limited to just one store, just a mom and pop or just one person. Um, so I, that, well said, Michael. I really wrote a lot of the things that I said. So thank you.
Barbara, go ahead.
Um, well, being housebound, I did my research over the telephone. Dr. Art Jensen, who's a marketing professor at Sac State, we discussed this and he was born, raised in Ione, so he understands small towns. And he said that this store is going to bring in so much people to downtown that that will then spend money in the restaurants and the other stores. But to get a double. But to get a double opinion, I asked Dr. Jacqueline Ryle of Fresno State, psychologist who teaches marketing and advertising. She too confirmed that this store, as well as the Herick Building, are going to bring in more foot traffic to downtown that will spend it in this store, but will spend it also in other stores. And you also have to realize, this is a high-end boutique. I did my research on what they were selling. I also looked at their other 10 stores and their storefronts are different. So a formula business means that they have to have the same exterior and, and they don't. Okay, so from what I've heard and what was recommended, this store will be a benefit to downtown business district as opposed to handicap problem. Thank you.
Thank you. As I looked at it, I was thinking, okay, Ms. Chin could have come to town, bought the building, opened up her store under the name of Chin Dry Goods. And we wouldn't be having this conversation. Yet she could have sold everything that her therapy store sell.
Okay.
If I'm not mistaken. So I, you know, I appreciate that, that she has come to us. And she has presented a story. She is, she's talked about the growth of her company. She has talked about her family, the connection to the foothills and so on. Sitting through the, the almost six hours of, of back and forth, pro and con to this a couple of weeks ago, I, I must say I was a little appalled when I heard things like, you're not welcome to be part of our community. Love your store, but not in our downtown. That bothered me that we get to that point. I, I was upset when, when a lawyer said that we need to have an environmental impact study done on a store that is pretty much the same as the store that just left. Stall tactic. It was also brought up by someone that, that bringing the therapy store in would bring, would bring a urban blight.
Yeah.
That was a good one. I, I kind of had to laugh at that one. You know, as, and I, and I think I've said this before, as a consumer, and I walk downtown once a week. And when I see an empty building with cardboard in the windows, I go, what's wrong with our downtown? If I walk downtown Folsom right now, there's a couple of empty shops. I'm going, what's going on here? It's not 100%. I don't want to see that come to us because we're not going to allow a, a store like the therapy store to go in. I think we'd be making a big mistake. And, and I agree with, with Commissioner Finn, friend that, that this will be, this will go before the, the, the city council. And when you were, Mr. Friend, you were talking about kind of thinking outside the box in terms of, of what we're doing if we have to make a change. You know, I was brought up with, if you don't, if, if the skill you have doesn't work, then you got to find another skill and move on. And, you know, I, I walked downtown after going out to dinner on a Friday night at seven o'clock and the only things that were open were, were restaurants. And most of the hours on the store say between either 10:00 or 11:00 AM and 5:00 PM, when restaurants are open much later and a lot of foot traffic. I, I think there's ways of, of getting those that are afraid that the store is going to take business away from them. Then they need to think in terms of, how can I draw people into my store? And just not sit and, and be happy with what you have at this point. I think if we were to deny this, we are saying that we are afraid of competition and I don't think we are.
I had, I had another comment, if I may. It has, it's been suggested that perhaps there's a problem with our, our process. I would say our process, this deliberative process that we're going through is, is more than adequate. I think the issue is that the ordinance might need to be revisited. And that certainly is something that, that the citizens and businesses can ask council to do. And maybe that, that needs to happen. That's, that's not our responsibility. But in terms of, in terms of what we do, in terms of applying the ordinance and our deliberations, I, I think the process is very, very, very good. And I, and I don't see a need to change that, so.
I'd like to say something shortly. I consider myself average Jane and John Doe. And when I travel, particularly to Grass Valley and Nevada City and Virginia City and Angels Camp, et cetera, 49er miners, you might say, I go in every store. And I think the majority of people that go to those kind of towns go in every store. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions of commissioners to staff? Someone will have to make a motion.
John, real quick, is that it was the 10-1-19 meeting where the five of us had a presentation on formula businesses? If anyone is curious to see the thought process behind our satisfaction with this current ordinance.
All right.
I can make one, one chairman, one comment, Mr. Chairman, just for clarification. Thank you. I'm referring to the memorandum to the planning commission dated November the 24th. And you have that. And basically what that memorandum does is it has an underline and strikeout through the document where staff had added additional findings for consideration by the commission. When you read the first paragraph in there, I make reference to the November 17th hearing on the matter. And then I talk about the October 30th letter that we received from Patrick Saluri. And at the last sentence there, I state, staff verbally read into the record additional recommended findings for the planning commission's consideration. There was another section of that sentence that was inadvertently left off. Basically, it would have stated, in response to a letter received from Patrick Saluri dated November the 16th, the day before of the hearing, we received that letter. And that was a letter that also had an attachment to it from a Philip King, who was an economist. So that was the reason for my lengthy staff report that I gave, where a previous speaker has said that I just read from the staff report. It wasn't read from the staff report. That was information, that was staff's verbal response to that November 16th letter we, we received from Mr. Saluri. We didn't have time to prepare anything in writing. So we basically prepared then, I had a verbal response to that letter that I read into the record. So what you have before you then is, is almost verbatim of what I read into the record. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Chairman, I'm prepared to move the item.
Okay.
I move that we approve condition use permit 20-04 and site plan review SPR 20-04, adopting the staff report as part of the public record. Making the following California SEQA findings as specified in the staff report, Roman numeral two, A, B and C. And the findings for the COP 20-04 and SPR 20-04 as specified in the staff report, Roman numeral three, A through H, and including item Roman numeral four.
Is there a second to that motion?
Only question is on the memo.
Before you do that point of order, we need a second for discussion, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'll second that.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that, Michael. Commissioner Friend, the D through, there's DE and F under section two on the memo that Pierre passed out. Is that the one that we should be approving, the one with the extra underlined conditions?
Yes, you should be, staff is recommending the actions that are in that November 24th memorandum. So you see the recommended actions, which then were the actions from the original staff report. But we have put in some additional findings and those are underlined. But staff is recommending that you approve all of the, all the findings contained in that November 24th memorandum to the commission.
Friend, just in case, it's attached to the very back of the quickstop one.
Exactly. Thank you very much. And I meant to add those into my motion and thank you for catching me on that. So I, I'll amend my motion then, that has been seconded to include the findings as specified in the action of the November 24th memorandum, item Roman numeral one, two, and Roman numeral two is A through F with 70, and Roman numeral three adopted as part of the public record, and Roman numeral four. If that's sufficient for staff.
Any other questions before we vote?
We need a second. I, I need Barbara to accept the amendment.
I accept it. Second.
All right.
And Mr. Chairman, if, if I, before we vote, if I could just direct it to staff to make sure, is that sufficient?
Yes, unless Mr. Painter has any issues that he sees that I don't.
I, I would hate just to have a problem based upon the deficiency of the motion.
No, it is clear from the amended motion that you intend to adopt the recommended actions taken or suggested in the November 24th memorandum to you, which was a component of tonight's agenda packet. I, I did not hear any, any modifications of the language or anything within what's, what's specified and provided in the November 24th memo.
No, thank you. I was in such a hurry to get back to my original packet. I forgot about this. Yep, thank you.
Okay. With this motion, Mr. Painter, please call a oral vote.
I'll start with the motion maker, member Friend.
Aye.
Second motion maker, member Reins.
Aye.
Chair List?
Aye.
Chair Lepper, or Spice Chair Lepper.
Aye.
Pardon.
Thank you. And once again, this, and all decisions by the planning commission may be appealed to the city council of Placerville within 10 calendar days. Thank you, one and all, for that. We thank the applicant for being with us and wish you the best of luck. That brings us to correspondence, or excuse me, communications room staff.
Well, there, there has been an appeal filed to a staff decision on a time extension request.
I'm sorry, do we need Chris to come back on?
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, I, I need to call Chris to let her know that she can now participate. So can we go on a, a two or three minute break?
Works for me.
Is anybody going to say no?
I, I would just, I would like to remind, if I may, I'd like to remind commissioners that the last time we were on break, we had an open mic. And so I think it's really important for folks to mute until we get back.
Chris is here actually, so I don't know if everyone left yet or not, but she's back.
We're good to go.
Yeah.
And Amy, you've really been on point tonight catching all these things.
Ah, you know, I got to do one thing right.
Okay, it looks like the director, are we coming back into session or, or do we want to adhere to our two or three minute break?
Maybe we better stay with a break because our, Mr. Rivas has stepped out.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Painter, are you ready for, to speak to us?
Yes.
At this point, we do not envision having a meeting on December 15th. The next scheduled date or regular date of your meetings is, I believe, the fifth, pardon me, get my calendar, the 5th of January. And there will be at least one item on that agenda. So the 15th of December, we are going dark.
Okay.
So we're going to own the 15th.
Anything from commissioners to staff?
I do. I, I have one. Of the last couple of meetings, not this meeting actually, for like the first time. We've had, and it began with the demolition on Cedar Ravine. And, and there, there was a lot of dissatisfaction and I, I will admit some dissatisfaction on my part. Because the Herick Building where Sue Taylor is, the Hangman's Building, I voted to permit the demolition of that building because all of the evidence and information that we had presented to us from all the consultants said it was not restorable. And, and again, I think Sue Taylor and her husband are to be commended and that's a gross understatement for the work that they've done and what they've done in saving that building. What, what I am dissatisfied with, and I'm hoping staff can, can help us get there, is with that Cedar Ravine building, there were people who were absolutely adamant that that building had historical value. Okay, they, and they, and that's why they thought it was such a travesty for it to be permitted to be demolished. And it seems to me that we do not have clear, objective parameters to establish the historical value. And it doesn't have to be designated as a, a historic monument or a building of, of history, whatever the, the phrase is. There are other elements that go into making or defining something as, as historic. And, and, and I want to be comfortable as a commissioner when I make a decision for like in this case to, to permit the demolition. You know, I want to know that we are in fact not losing something. So I'm not asking for staff to, to address this tonight, but I think something needs to be done. The public doesn't understand. It's kind of like this formula business tonight and, and last, and last time. People believe that formula businesses are prohibited. Well, they're not, okay? They go through a review process. And, and so there, there's lack of clarity and, and, and understanding as to what is historic, what meets the, what are the criteria? I'm not even sure what the criteria are. There are some, there are some that are absolutely unambiguous, right? But the House on Cedar Ravine, it was, it wasn't that clear. But I, I can see the argument for the Blair House, why it should, should have been considered. So anyway, I'm hoping staff can, can provide us some help moving forward with that. Because again, it just, it was unsettling. I'll, I'll just say that. Thank you for the time.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I can give a very, very brief response to Commissioner's friend's comment and question.
Go ahead.
Basically, if you recall, 3095 Cedar Ravine was brought to you prior to that last meeting where you went ahead and approved the demolition. And staff was in agreement that there was probably insufficient information for the commission to render a decision. And so we basically had a conversation with the applicant. The applicant withdrew that original application for insufficient information. So a historic evaluation was prepared and that was repaired by a professional. In fact, the person was, is very well renowned. In fact, the person was, is very well renowned. That person sat on. A, um, state historic preservation, um, commission and, and the like, and it's done hundreds of these. So. In that historic evaluation, there are four criteria to be met. In order to assume a structure is being historic. And in that evaluation, if it was read, you could clearly see that the finding, uh, was that the building. Uh, was not eligible for the register. It would not be contributor. Uh, to an historic district either. Either at the state or the federal level. So I think, uh, the commission had sufficient information. Through that, um, historic evaluation that was prepared. And provided in that, in that application that you considered.
Here, I, I, I appreciate that. I, the, the historic register, that's, that's one thing. That's very objective. That's easy to hang our hat on. Where it gets dicey is in the contribution. To, to the history or, or the historic palette or background. And, and I realize and I respect the, the professional that was hired, but it seemed to me that I, I want to say her name, Ms. Chapman. Or some other, it seemed like they had hired someone who, who came up, a professional who came up with a different. Conclusion. And, and I'm not saying that what we did was wrong or, or anything along those lines. But I, it wasn't comfortable. I'll, I'll say that much. It still wasn't comfortable at the end of the day. And I, you know, I've been. They've been sending me, you know, additional, inviting me to participate on this and that. And, and, and I. I, uh, enjoy the history of, of Placerville going back. And, and so. I'm just thinking that maybe we can, we can do a little bit better or come up with something. I'm, I'm simply. Requesting that that be looked at again. That's all.
Someone else? Uh, Christine, go ahead.
Uh, Michael, I, um. I understand, you know, I just want to sympathize with you that you were uncomfortable with that decision. You know, I, we all thoroughly read the first staff report that came through, um. And on the basis of that, I was, uh. Very comfortable approving the demolition permit. The applicant withdrew. And then the subsequent, uh, expert opinion just bolstered what was already in the original staff report. And you're, you're right. It is, uh, it's a difficult. It's a difficult decision, but that's, uh, our job unfortunately. And, you know, the way I read, uh, both the staff reports, uh, the expert opinion. You know, this, this was, uh. It, it was old, but there wasn't a significant reason to, uh, go to, I guess, extraordinary lengths. Uh, to require someone to restore that particular building, when in fact, you know, it's been red tagged for quite some time. And since it hadn't been officially designated as, you know, something on the historical register. Uh, there was plenty of time for someone who had, uh, the means and, uh, the knowledge to. If, if they wanted us to take on that kind of project, they certainly had. Years ample opportunity to step forward and, and do that. And, and yet no one did. Uh, so since it, if, you know, I, it is just our job to. To look at those facts that are presented to us. And make the best decision we can. And, um, you know, I, uh, I think we did a, a very good job evaluating everything that was presented to us. And, uh, brought our experience, our love of the community and our history. We bring all of that to bear when we make these decisions. Thanks.
Anything else?
Chair, Chairless, there are two people with their hands raised and under the Brown Act. This item is on the agenda and the public has the right to provide comment.
Okay. Yeah.
Uh, first up is caller eight, five, seven. Go ahead, please. Going on.
Mute off.
Go ahead.
Good, good evening, Commission.
Go ahead.
So are you, you're discussing, uh, potential future agenda items, I take it? Um, I really think you should. Bring forward the artificial turf. Ban and commercial zones. For discussion. Um, just talk about it. Figure out how you could make it happen. Uh, if you're going to require. If you're going to allow it. Then what quality of material are you going to allow? Uh, for the demolition thing, I, it just breaks my heart. I have seen so many beautiful old structures. And I'm a carpenter, so I love the old wood. Um, seeing them destroyed because they're outside of the historic districts. Um. I would like you to. Discuss, uh, a recommendation to the change of the ordinance. The city council that you set a time. Any structure over seventy-five, any structure over a hundred years old. Set some time where all these structures that are outside of. Regular review that it's already protected. That they come before you for a public hearing. Um, there was a beautiful old building behind. The UPS store up there at the intersection of Schnell School and Broadway. And just one day it was gone. And I thought, what happened? And city said, well, you know, it's not on any register. It's not in any. Historic district, nah, a hundred bucks, tear it down. It's gone. So if you could. Please consider bringing back for discussion. Recommendations of the city council on how to tighten up some of these ordinances. Uh, because we all say we love. History in Placerville, but some of our ordinances don't really. Get there. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller.
We have Jen C. Go ahead, Jen C.
Turn your mute off. Jen C, you're gonna have to turn your mute off. We can't hear you.
Oh, is that, can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Goodness, there's just so many ways to, yeah. Um, thank you. I, I, I don't, I, I know this might not be the right thing. I just, I do need Pierre to clarify because he told me an email today that we were having a hearing. On December fifteenth and that, that is not, well, it, it is actually, there is a component of it that relates to the Cedar Ravine. I mean, the Clay Street Bedford, uh, historic district. But anyway, so that's a question and hoping, uh, he can address that. As far as the house, I, I just have to say, thank you for. You know, just thank you for reflecting on it. And, uh, you know, I just, I have to say, I watched the demolition and, you know, it just became so clear. You could see. The layers coming off and, and just to go back even to the basic criteria. And of course, that last criteria has to do with archaeology. And, you know, I, I remember you all saying, we agree that it was historic, but this isn't the house that she lived in. But it became very clear watching that demolition that the house, you know, that there were the layers of the house and. And basically what you were saying is probably not true because it appeared. I mean, we didn't have the whole reconstruction of all, all the different, you know, events associated with that house. And again. Alterations and additions during a historic period are okay, like the Carey House. It, you know, a building isn't a static thing. It has. A life, like a living document. It's just in what is the historic period and change within the historic period is part of, part of those events. But I'm just saying, you know, when you think about an archaeology site and the Ivy House archaeology site is another one that's just up the road. Uh, you know, uh, in, in terms of something that everybody's going to be looking at. You know, just everything associated with that site that's been there. It's clearly an archaeology site. It's, you know, the references made to the deposits in the EIR, but. The whole thing is a site and that house was clearly. An archaeology site. And, and again, you have a criteria about being able to learn information from a resource. And peeling that thing away. I mean, it's just really unfortunate that somehow we didn't at least systematically take it apart. You know, in a way that we would have actually learned. All the details, uh, you know, that could have been learned from that site. So, but I, I, I just appreciate that there's reflection about it. And there's going to hopefully be an opportunity. I do think these ordinances really need a hard look. They were designed a long time ago. And they really need to be looked at, you know, uh, uh, in terms of what do we really want to do here with these, you know?
Do you have thirty seconds?
These remnants that we still have, but thank you. And again, about the fifteenth, if you can clarify, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Steve, no. Go ahead, please.
Hello, Commission. This is Steve No. Um, my comment is, is if we were to move forward with ideas proposed. By other speakers. Um, you're talking about. Infringing on people's existing rights for their property. So. If you're gonna say, listen, now this building or that building is historic and you may not tear it down or you may not use it for the use you want. And it is a, is consistent with. Regulations now. How are you going to address that with people that are the existing owners? And future owners? Because that's got to be put into the title. Of that property that. It's going to infringe on what they can do with it. Yeah, that's all.
That, that's a challenge.
Thank you. Anyone else?
We have a Sue. Go ahead, please.
Hi, it's Sue Taylor. I hesitate doing this because it, um. But she brought up the historic buildings in Placerville and it just, it rips me apart when I watch the disregard to. The city and their attitude towards these structures. Um. There's, um. You know, when you're talking about a historical resource, um, it's pretty much all it has to do is be listed on somebody's list to be, um. Reference as a historic resource, um, in the world of SEQA. And that's why they went out and get a consultant because you're basically making a basis to say. You know, if somebody challenges this, we have evidence that says that we don't have to consider that. Which actually you do when it's, um. On any list or, or any, uh, statement of any book anywhere. Um, it'll, it only has to be, um, potential. To be historic. And what's interesting is this building was inside of a historic district. You have four of those. And when people buy property in those districts, they're buying into a historic district that has a ton of policies within your own planning guides. And I actually listed those down, um. And, and to show you that if you go through the historical buildings, um, residential districts, it says that. All buildings within that district must be analyzed by the planning commission. So that makes every one of those, um, should be considered in, in that realm. And. What bothers me with the city is that you spend so much time to say something's not historic instead of saying. You know, this has a historical element to it, but it can't be salvaged. It's beyond somebody's ability. I mean, I, I could, I could have restored that building. It just breaks my heart, but. And I actually was looking, there was some grant funds that I would have helped these people with if they, you know, they were so quick to do this. Um. But, and, and that's the other thing that's sad, that people aren't guided to have easier ways to deal with these buildings. But. The, the point is that, um. When you say it's gonna, there's no salvage. We can't do anything.
Sue, you have thirty seconds?
All SEQA requires is that you document it. They're going to tear it down. You take documentation. So you, this eighteen hundred building. From the eighteen hundreds, you have some type of documentation of what was there. Now we have nothing. We have, there is no, he took a bulldozer, bulldozed over the top of it. And no analyzing anything that was there. Everything was assumption when you guys made your discussions. And I think it's just, it's really sad and it would be really wonderful if you kind of changed that. Position that everything's not historical. Instead say. Yes, it is. It's in Placerville from the eighteen hundreds. Let's document this before we destroy it. So we have some evidence of what was there.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. I move that we adjourn. Have a very good. Holidays. Merry Christmas to all of you.
Thank you.
Chairless, there, there was one hand that went up right at the end of the closing. I'm not sure if you want to acknowledge that. There's a delay. I, I don't.
We are adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, everybody.
Yeah, God bless us, everyone.
See you next year.
Next year, right?